... meeting for March 26, 2018. Mr. Calavano, roll call and pledge of allegiance, please.
Mr. Alper.
Here.
Mr. Charles.
Here.
Mrs. Mordecai. Mr. Robertson.
Here.
And Mr. Schwartzbaum.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Notice of meeting, please take notice, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided for in the following manner. An written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 4:00 PM on January 9, 2018. That said notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and a Star Ledger. That said notice was posted in the Lobby of the Administration Building of the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Calavano. I need a move, motion to move the closing of public meetings from March 12, 2018.
I'll move that.
A second?
I'll second.
Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Mr. Alper.
Yes.
Mrs. Schwartzbaum.
Yes.
Vice President Robertson.
Yes.
President Charles.
Yes.
Mr. Ruskey, superintendent report.
Thank you. We're going to have a brief presentation about our recommended evaluation model for next school year, the Danielson Model. If I can just ask the board members to have a seat out in the front, we'll go ahead and
Good evening. This evening, we're going to present our review of our current teacher evaluation model by our DIAC committee, their findings and recommendations for the upcoming year. This year, we had to reassemble our DIAC committee because in 2017 districts were informed that major updates, critical adjustments were made to our current Marzano framework. With that said, they, Learning Sciences, let the districts know that anyone currently using Marzano either has to move over to the new Marzano model or choose a different model. This includes Eye Observation. Eye Observation is our electronic platform, and that's how we house our teacher observation. So the DIAC charge was simply to review Marzano's new focused teacher evaluation model. When we sat to consider the teacher observation model, we first developed some look fours. We said, well, what are we looking for in a teacher observation model? What do we want that instrument to serve the teachers with? We first considered Achieve New Jersey. They have specific requirements for the state. Some of those requirements are the number of times a tenured teacher is observed, the number of times a non-tenured teacher is observed, that the observation system must have announced and unannounced pieces, it must include post-observation conferences, it must have an electronic platform by which the state can automatically receive the teacher's scores, and it also has to have four proficiency ratings. New Jersey's ratings range from highly effective, effective, partially effective, and ineffective. So when we considered what are we looking for in an evaluation model, Achieve New Jersey requirements were non-negotiables. Those are state requirements regardless of the model that we choose, they have to align to state requirements. We also discussed our district priorities, and our district priorities were simply given the timeframe that Marzano has given us, we need to make sure whatever model we can adopt, that we can implement it effectively, thoroughly, significant professional development, transparency, communicate with the staff, and have opportunity for feedback. The DIAC committee then sat to develop their look fours in a model, and I kind of categorized them into these six major areas. The things that the DIAC committee was looking for was a model that really represents good teaching and learning. So where we're going into the classroom to observe and capture evidence around teaching and learning versus having a model that drives the classroom, right? We didn't want to have a model that says you have to look for these things when you're walking into the classroom as opposed to let's go into the classroom, let's see and observe good teaching and learning. Clarity of expectations, that the rubric has simple, clear language so that the observer and the person being observed alike is very clear on what's being looked for, and that subjectivity is kept to a minimum. Inter-reliability, that whichever model we choose has sufficient training, et cetera, so that no matter who's coming in to observe, we're getting like scores. They asked for a growth model, one model that is not punitive was their language, right? A model that is really about them growing as professionals, growing the practice, and growing student performance. A model that is fair for all, so whichever model we're choosing, their thought was it should include all staff, not just the homeroom teacher. It should include our deans and our coordinators, our athletic trainers, our child study team members, our school counselors, so it should be specific to all of our staff. And lastly, a very critical piece to the DIAC committee was that it be a collaborative process. So they didn't want observation to be something that was being done to them as opposed to something that we're doing together in a clinical supervision model where we are coaching instructional practice. We did have 40 members of our DIAC committee, they did span across all of the grade spans. The majority of them were teachers, we had non-instructional staff, and of course, our administrators. Before we began to look at the new model, we asked, well, what's the state of the current model? Where are we with that? What's one word that you would use to describe the current Marzano model? Cumbersome was the number one word. Asked on a scale of one to five, being the strongest, rate the effectiveness of the current model, 55% said it is what it is, right? And 35% said it was ineffective. When we asked the DIAC, does the teacher evaluation model help improve instruction? This was very alarming. 55% said depends on who's observing. And that spoke directly to the subjectivity of the rubric language. There was one rubric that was generic for all components of the Marzano model. The extent to which the model helps teacher improve student performance, 62% said the relationship between the model and student performance is inconsistent. Again, something that observation should be about improving student performance. So DIAC on the new Marzano model, we looked at all of the differences. The new model says that it moves into a more standards-based approach with rigor, it decreases from 60 elements to 23, the desired effects focus on student learning, and the scoring scales are supposed to be much more aligned to each domain. So we really took an in-depth look, we had various meetings, met with a consultant, and after we examined the new model, the number one concern was that in order for a teacher to score innovating, which is highly effective, 91 to 100% of the students have to demonstrate That was their response, right? So it was unrealistic. So they felt that, well, how would we be able to consistently demonstrate proficiency? What if all of the students are not demonstrating that at the same time? In order to get developing, which is partially effective, 51% of the students have to be demonstrating proficiency. So what does that mean? It's not just state test. That means that our model would potentially turn into a collection of data. It would turn into always having to develop assessments and collect data in order to see if a teacher was performing, and they didn't think that that was about good teaching and learning. They thought that that was just about data and statistics, right? So the DIAC unanimously agreed that changing to the new Marzano focused teacher evaluation model is not a viable option for the West Orange Public Schools. We briefly discussed a homegrown model, but that wasn't realistic to develop one in one year with the rubrics and the electronic platform. We had to disqualify Marshall because Marshall requires 10 observations in 10 minutes. We didn't think that that was effective, and that does not support the state mandate. So then we looked at the strong teacher performance. When we examined strong, we examined these elements from the performance standards down to the ratings and the weighting. We had a consultant come in, we read through their white papers, we viewed different webinars, et cetera. The DIAC committee felt that the rubric language was also subjective, they felt that it reminded them of the struggles that they're currently dealing with, with the Marzano model. The teachers in the strong model are required to maintain an evidence log per performance standard. There are seven, three pieces of evidence per month, it would be a great demand on the teacher, and so then that was a concern. Another part of the strong model was that student surveys are a part of the teacher's rating, and they felt that that was inappropriate. I think the biggest piece with strong was that there is a single rating applied to the teacher evaluation at the end of the year only. So that means that if a teacher's observed two or three or four times, they would not know how they were doing until the end of the year, and because there's no rating ascribed, and they felt that that could be very subjective and/or leave room for lack of clarity between the teacher and the observer. Also, a great distractor from this model was that the performance standards are rated and weighted differently for teachers of ELA in math and everybody else. So teachers of ELA in math, their weighting for each standard was very heavy because they were core content, and everybody else had a different weighting, and they didn't think that was fair. So when, if we're thinking back to our criteria, our look fours, what we were looking for in a model, this did not meet it, and so then the DIAC unanimously also agreed, no too strong. And so then we looked at Charlotte Danielson's Framework for Teaching, which is the recommendation this evening. We had a session with the Danielson consultant, our leaders did, our DIAC did, and then we had a second session for clarifying questions. When we're looking at Charlotte Danielson's Framework for Teaching, we're going to notice that in the framework, there are four domains of teaching responsibility. The first one is planning and preparation, the second one is the classroom environment, the third is instruction, and domain four is professional responsibilities. Distinct aspects of each domain are further divided into 22 components. So here we start to see that the framework is going to get more specific and more specific and more specific, right? You have your larger domain, and then you get greater specificity with the components, and then you get greater specificity with critical attributes, and again, it provides possible teacher examples by component, not just for the larger domain. The components serve to define the work of the domain. So here in 3A, communicating with students, we don't just say we're looking for you to communicate with students, then it begins to define it. We're talking about expectations for learning, directions and procedures, explanations of content, use of oral and written language, and we begin to define the domain. Now, it's important to know that even though there are components in each of the domains, they all relate to one another, and that was also a positive for Danielson and a difference with Marzano. For example, in domain one, planning and preparation, if a teacher is planning a lesson and setting instructional outcomes, then in domain three, that's how that teacher's executing those instructional outcomes, and did they find success? Did the students, were the students able to demonstrate attainment of those outcomes? Another definite like, if you will, for the DIAC committee members was that every single component has its own rubric. Again, clarity, specificity, reducing subjectivity. So this is an example of domain three instruction. If I zoom into 3C, which is engaging students in learning, here are my levels of performance, and for every single component, there is a rubric with very specific language. If we're looking at a teacher who's effective, we're thinking about learning tasks and activities that are aligned to outcomes, we're thinking about challenging student thinking, we're thinking about teacher scaffolding to support engagement, how they're grouping students with suitable activities, and that the lesson has a clearly defined structure. Again, the language gets very specific, so we're very clear that when we're coming in to observe the classroom, if there is evidence collected in the area of engaging students in learning, we know exactly what we're looking for. And as Danielson would say, the teacher's eyes automatically kind of move to the right, and they go to highly effective, right? Because they want to know, well, then what's the difference? And so then here, the major difference in almost the entire framework between effective and highly effective is when students begin to take ownership of their learning. It's not that the students are running the classroom as much as that they are engaging intellectually with the content, and they are assisting and/or contributing to the learning in the classroom. Another piece in the framework that the DIAC really liked, again, I'm using that term as it was in our survey, was that it was fair for all. It comes with non-instructional staff framework rubrics. So these are the rubrics that are specific to our staff. So we have different rubrics for the trainers, the child study team, library media specialists, non-instructional staff, our school counselors, and our school nurse, so that they don't feel that we have this generic model, and it doesn't really apply to them, but it applies to me, and you're looking at my practice individually. Here is an excerpt from the rubric for the LDTC, and the LDTC understands and consistently adheres to building and district federal procedures, effectively sets priorities resulting in the efficient completion of evaluations and other assigned job duties. So here's an example, and all of the rubrics for non-instructional staff are specific. We have posted, we have created a DIAC committee site on our website, we shared that link with the board two weeks ago. Our staff is busy on the site. We have all of the framework posted, all of the rubrics, we have the rubrics for non-instructional staff posted, and we have a survey posted as well, where teachers are asking questions and providing feedback. There are 42 New Jersey districts using the Danielson framework around us. These are the names of the districts, which was a priority for us because we need other districts to get support from. As a Marzano district, there were so few that there was rarely an opportunity for our teachers to engage in professional development with our peers. And so then, this leads me to the implementation plan for 2019. On the 12th, we shared this with the board, our implementation plan, and today, we're asking, after our presentation of findings and recommendations and the overview for the board to approve or disapprove, right, the Danielson model. On March 14th, we presented an overview and asked for feedback from our staff during a 90-minute, and since the 15th and through to the 29th, we've been having Q&amp;A sessions after school all throughout the district. They've been going very well. Today, we met with Gregory, about 30 staff members were present, they asked really good questions, they gave us phenomenal feedback. So far, we've had over 138 people respond to the surveys. The guiding question for the surveys has been, when we're implementing the new model, what must you have in terms of PD in order to feel confident and comfortable come September when we implement? And so then they're giving us that feedback. Again, this is posted online, and those Q&amp;A listening sessions will continue through March 29th. In April, should this be approved, then we will have our 90-minute and will begin to dig into the domains and components. May through June, we'll have voluntary PD throughout the district, two sessions for each domain. In August, our new teacher orientation, we would bring those teachers up to date with all of the training. September 4th and 5th would be days of PD so that we could completely have the staff prepared to begin the new year. And then throughout the year, October, December, January, February, with all of our 90-minute professional development dedicated to the Danielson model. At the end of the upcoming year then, March 2019, what we would like to do is begin to prepare for the following year, to migrate everything into frontline so that we don't have to use multiple systems. We currently, in the district, use frontline for attendance, we used it for AppleTrack, and now we would be able to use it for eye observation. In the future, we could also bring in our SGOs, our SGPs, our professional development plans, and our lesson plans. So everything would be able to be migrated into frontline. It would also be a budget efficiency. And then, following April, begin to prepare for the APRs, evaluation summaries, and professional development plans. This would be the schedule for our district school leadership and certified trainers. Should the board approve the model this evening, on March 28th, we're ready to go to train 50 staff members to be certified Danielson trainers, with the intention of having a minimum of two teachers per building certified so that they can be the go-to and the coach in their building. So what would this cost? Well, frontline is the electronic platform, it's like what we currently have, eye observation. The cost is $28,690. We would have a one-time startup cost of $5,000. Our professional development for this current year, to start turning, to start training turnkey trainers, $1,350. Next year, $4,200. And the certification training, $3750. Now, when we look at this frontline cost, remember, it's not really 28 because we are already paying 22 for eye observation, and that's already in our next year's budget. We're currently expending that now, so it would be a difference of $6,690. So for this current year, we would expend $17,250. For school year 2019, $37,890, of which 22 is already budgeted for, and years two onward would be $28,690. So these are the two items you see on our agenda this evening, to approve and/or adopt the Charlotte Danielson teacher, sorry for my typo, evaluation system, and for the professional development, to begin certifying trainers on March 28th, June 26th, and June 27th. And I just really want to thank our DIAC committee members, they worked thoroughly, diligently, and really gave this their all, this is a reflection of their work, and they did a very good job reflecting the perception of the majority of our staff, and also to our planning team, Liz Veniziano, Steve Oshelsky, and all coaches.
Mr. Charles, want to open questions up to the board?
Sure. We'll start, Mr. Alper.
Sure. Just for those who don't know, can you explain just a little about what DIAC is, what it stands for, who's on the DIAC committee?
Sure. It's the District Evaluation Committee, and the state requires all districts to have a DIAC when we're considering teacher evaluation and monitoring that process of feedback. So as we're in a evaluation model, then there should be committee members that represent the different schools to say how they feel we're doing in terms of evaluation, is it fair, and what can we improve, what professional development might they need in order to satisfy the different components.
That's a big group, you said it was about 40 people?
Yes.
Right.
It's actually larger than that, we had 40 consistent.
You had 40 on this, okay, gotcha.
And then, a lot of people who visited us for different components.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it.
Mrs. Schwartzbaum?
How long has the district had been using Marzano?
Five or six years.
So when we look back on choosing Marzano, was Danielson an option?
It was, yes.
And why did we choose Marzano versus Danielson then?
I don't know, I wasn't here, nor is Mr. Mendez. I have heard from the DIAC members, but I don't know specifically.
So overall, the consensus is that Marzano is not what the staff
Unanimously.
unanimously wants. And is there, can you discuss some of the concerns of having a new evaluation system, a new evaluation criteria that's implemented? Have you received any feedback on that?
To switch to a new one?
Right.
Yeah. So the DIAC was very forthcoming and transparent with their concerns about implementation. Their honest opinion was that our implementation needs to be thorough, needs to have professional development, it needs to be consistent and ongoing. I don't believe that they felt that they received that in prior years. They wanted to know that they had an opportunity to provide feedback into the model, that they knew exactly when it was going to be rolled out, that they had say in the professional development, and that it was consistent, ongoing professional development, not just one opportunity at the beginning of a year, and that's it. And I think those were the critical pieces, that they really felt, if we can do these things well, then we're okay with moving.
Right.
Mr. Schwartzbaum, I think it's important to note that when Marzano was implemented, it was the first time in the state that it had to be done, and it was new to everybody. Every district struggled, there was some fear about what was going to happen and how was this going to be done. Because the DIAC committee and Mr. Mendez has done a thorough job in making sure that it's a two-year rollout, that the PD is built in, the planning is there, we're going around and having those little meetings to get the feedback from each of the schools, plus they're used to what it is now. We believe it's going to be a much smoother rollout this year than it was in the past.
Okay. So I guess I'm asking, I'd like some feedback on the, some of the concerns that I've heard, not regarding many of the programs that we, that we as a district choose a program, then we roll it out, and then we change, and there's this inconsistency as well as the need to learn another system and new criteria of evaluation, and it just creates a lot of trepidations, chaos, so on and so forth.
I think in the Q&amp;As that we've been having, I've been to about four or five schools at this point and reading through all the responses, the questions really are about, for example, if 3C is looking at engagement, will we receive professional development around what engagement is, right? Will we have an opportunity to inform that? It's asking about the collaborative model, so a lot of the questions are saying, if it's collaborative, will I have say in my rating? Or is it, you walk into my classroom, you observe, you rate me, and that's it? And we're saying, no, this is a growth model, so we calmly observe, we collect evidence, we share that evidence, which is new. You see what the evidence is, where it places on the rubric, and then in a post-observation conference, then we discuss that evidence. You are able to bring in artifacts, you are able to bring in evidence yourself, and then we're two contributing factors in a collaborative process. So those were big questions. Another big question was about the clarity of the rubric language for subjects such as art, music, and phys ed, because they're movement-based and/or drawing-based, so they want to know if throughout the year, then, in the column that says possible teacher examples, if we will meet with the teachers and let them design possible examples so that we're clear on, you know, what should be looked for in that classroom. So again, we want to minimize the subjectivity, and of course, that's a definite. And so then, it's been questions like that, it's just been clarifying questions. I have to honestly say, we haven't gotten anything less than, can you clarify? And what will the PD look like? And, you know, can I participate in the feedback? So I think that's been really the vein of the conversation. I haven't gotten anything on the opposite end of that.
Have you checked with any of the districts that are currently using Danielson as far as whether our projected PD will be sufficient to train the staff?
Sure, and I've implemented Danielson myself for nine years, and so certified trainers, we have many certified trainers on staff from other districts as well, those were members of the core planning team, and again, we're training 50 more. Yes, we're looking at the districts around us, having conversations. As a matter of fact, the DIAC committee members, a lot of their spouses and/or friends are in districts where they're using Danielson, and so then they came and they brought that feedback to the committee, and we had really good, healthy dialogue around that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything further, Mr. Schwartzbaum? No. Mr. Robertson?
First of all, I'm just really impressed by the process that you took, truly democratized, tremendous amount of feedback permitted, a lot of input, a lot of involvement by teachers, and that's really wonderful. I was, you know, I was, you know, also, could you please send the digital copy, email the digital copy of this? That'd be great. Couple of questions. One, you refer to SGOs and SGP's. How will that be integrated? I see no reference to it within the model. How will that be transformed, and not just migrated, into this model?
Great. So, they are independent pieces. So, the observation model itself gives the teacher a rating of their instructional practice. That's what we will capture if we adopt the Danielson model in frontline. The state has a formula for calculating and weighting the different components of a teacher evaluation. So, instructional practice is 50%. The SGO is another percentage. The SGP, if you're a core teacher, is the other percentage, right? To make up the 100. It's 50, and then the other two are 50 combined. So, what will happen is, this year, 2019, should we move to the new model, we will only introduce the instructional practice model change. We will continue with the SGOs as-is for another year. State calculates the SGP's, as to not confuse and/or put too many things on the plate, right? We want to just focus on the instructional practice. On our implementation plan, then, the following May, when it's time to do SGOs for 2020, then we will sit down and begin to plan SGOs inside the new system. But that will give us nine months with Danielson. It will give us great time to transition and get feedback, and to consider how we would like to use assessments to inform our SGOs, specifically because component 3D, using assessment to inform instruction, is a critical piece of the framework.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. How will our on-course lesson planning software, which helped to provide a lot of structure and framework for lesson planning, and actually for curriculum planning as well, how will that be integrated so that it's in sync with this, since judging the lesson plan is going to be part of this?
Absolutely. And so then, you know, if I could say to you what were our top 10 questions in the survey, that was one of them. It was about the lesson plans. And again, we're hearing the feedback from the staff in terms of not taking on too many new initiatives, not taking them all on at once. It's overwhelming. And the DACT was very, very committed to just staying focused on just the model. So, when this question came up over and over again in the Q and A, as we were rotating through the buildings, we said to the teachers, "Next year, after we kind of get our bearings with the instructional practice end, then we can talk about lesson plans." Does frontline have the capability? Absolutely. So, if at the end of next year, when the DACT is reassembled to consider lesson plans, which is, would be the process, then we have the capability within frontline to bring in all of the lesson plans into the Danielson framework. But we need the teachers to be able to develop that, right? They need to have, that's their baby right there.
Okay. Also related to lesson plans, you know, teachers' lesson plans are executing against administrators' curricula. And it's, you know, we have great administrators, not knocking our administrators, but it's not always ideal. How will you factor into the equation whether the curricula is necessarily meeting the needs? And we do a lot of curriculum writing and rewriting. And where's the, where's, how are we going to impact the product that they have to work with?
So, I think two things we need to think about, that this will not just be learning for teachers on the new model, but this will be learning for school and district leaders. And so then, a huge part of the Danielson framework considers evidence, opinion, and bias. So, if I'm coming into a classroom, I need to be able to distinguish the difference between the three. Evidence, 15 students are seated, five raised their hand, six of them are asking questions about the content. Opinion, all of the students in the classroom are engaged.
Right.
Right? What does engagement look like? So then, we need to train our leaders, and that was one of the survey pieces, 55% said, depends on who's observing. And so then, we need to fix that. We need to be very clear. And then, our bias, right? What do we come in? I think small group instruction would have handled this classroom better. Well, is that true or not, right? So, we're going to work with that training for our school leaders on the Danielson model, which would include domain one, planning and preparation. So, domain one thinks about planning. It doesn't think about a template. And so then, I think that's very important. It's another question that came up through all of the Q and As. This is about significance, not compliance, right? So, it's not about a template. It's not about, do I write my objective there? It's not a route, if I list the number of the standard, because that really doesn't have significance unless the objective that I've written, all of the activities support that objective, and that I am measuring that as I go through my lesson. I'm checking for progress, checking for understanding, and that I know, once I walk out of that lesson, if the students were able to meet that objective. So, it's designing a quality lesson. So then, when we get into those dialogues with teachers and administrators, because we're going to go through significant training, then I think that will happen organically. I think those conversations will be very robust, and I think we'll all come to terms with what we are designing as lesson. In terms of our curriculum, the new model that we're using, which is UBD, is totally aligned to Danielson, because we're checking for understanding, we're looking at standards, we're looking at alignment to instructional outcomes, we're looking at transfer. So, all of those things are embedded, and I feel at this point, that if we move in this direction, then we'll find greater cohesion between the two initiatives.
Are we, as part of that, given that this already has a lot of feedback loops built in, are teachers able to give feedback on how to improve the curricula within the UBD model?
Absolutely. And so then, that's happening now in our small groups, in the department meetings. As we go through curricula, the way we wrote it, we stated clearly that the curriculum design is a three-year process. Year one, we develop. Year two, we implement the written to see if it is actually implementable. We get feedback, we do revisions, and then year three, we bring it back to the table for readoption.
Okay. Couple of the challenges that we face, partly because of the tremendous diversity, and I don't mean racial and ethnic, I mean diversity in terms of the number of different levels of proficiency in learning, and within any one classroom. One of the challenges we run into is differentiation, and the other is enrichment. I saw some language in there, it's particularly for the high-quality level teacher, that spoke a little bit to, that spoke a little bit to differentiation, and a little bit to enrichment in terms of making sure that child is challenged. But how will that be worked into this equation?
So, number one, you're going to see differentiation weaved through the rubric language in all four domains. So, we'll be thinking about differentiation in domain one when we're planning. We'll be thinking about differentiation in domain two, when we know our students, and we know what they're coming to the classroom with, we're planning for them. In three, when we're actually executing those small group instruction, and then planning our assessment to measure that. And domain four, when I'm reflecting on my teaching practices, and I'm using all of that assessment to inform the instruction. So, the differentiation language is embedded throughout each element of the rubric, which is great, because in prior times, we've asked, well, what is differentiation? Well, now, we're going to have it defined.
Okay. And as we look at the dreaded Park scores, you know, when we looked at SGOs and SGP's before, and we looked at just some of the issues that came up around how Park factored in as well, how is that going to factor into, given that we're looking more at, from a standpoint of quality, and, but at the same time, trying to have less subjectivity, how's that going to factor into the overall equation?
So, the Park scores by state, until somebody else decides differently, are factored into the SGP.
Right.
Only.
So, even as we, I know we're not going to do it year one, but year two, we have to figure out then, how that translates into this new, new model.
I would hope the Park scores stay right with the SGP where they belong. I think that the SGO gives the teacher the flexibility to really choose what formative and/or summative assessment they feel really is a good indicator of student growth in their classroom. And I think Danielson does a great job at focusing on good instructional practices that get students there, right? So, what is it that you're doing to get the student to perform? How are you preparing them? I'm not, I'm not a proponent that Park and/or any state assessments belong in the framework itself.
I agree.
Leave it outside.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. I'm just worried about, even as it's factored already into SGP's, you know, just how much emphasis is really put on that, because that would be a big concern. Let me see. You know, as I looked at the tremendous detail in this, it certainly seems to eliminate a lot of subjectivity, but doesn't also seem to add a lot of complexity.
Danielson would say that teaching is a very complex profession, and that the rubric attempts to bring some simplicity to that, help us wrap ourselves around it, but teaching is complex, right? So, I think the rubric language is intended to try to dissect that and help us digest it in small, bite-sized pieces.
Okay. Last question. Speaking of rubrics, wouldn't it help, I mean, we just standardized the grading rubrics for the high school. As part of this, wouldn't it help to streamline things for teachers and administrators as you're implementing this? If we were to have a standardized rubric K5, and a standardized rubric 6 to 8? I mean, we do it at Edison, there's a standardized rubric that Mr. Fitzgerald and his team developed. But we've talked for years about how grading is inconsistent, class to class, and school to school. You know, when are we going to tackle that piece of the puzzle? Because if we are getting rid of some of the subjectivity, and we are putting in, building in this new philosophical and structural approach, and grading rubrics are what's being implemented on a daily, weekly, monthly basis, wouldn't a part of our steps include standardization of the grading rubric K5 and 6 to 8?
I think that can definitely be a discussion for the DACT and/or any other committee that's more suitable to address that. I would submit, then, that by really taking a look at 3D, how to use assessment to inform instruction in this model, by becoming proficient and/or highly effective in the area of using assessment to inform the instruction, then that will inform some of those policies, if you will. But we're not, we're not there yet. I think we can assign that to a committee for next year, along with lesson plans.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. I have one question, that's all. Very brief. On the Q and A listening sessions, you list the schools and the dates. Hazel and St. Cloud are not listed on the slide, were they just left off the slide? Were they incorporated into one of the other schools?
They're incorporated into one of the schools. What we did is that those are the central locations, and staff can come to any one of those locations. However, if a school says, can you just come to my building, we'll be there.
Okay. That's all I have. Mr. Retschman?
You can just hang out a little bit, Mr. Mendez. Once we're done, super tense report, we'll open up for public.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, next on the report is the snow makeup days calendar. So, we have on the agenda to approve the current school year with the two makeup days. Obviously, everybody knows that it's Thursday, April 5th, and Friday, April 6th are the two makeup days. They are full days of school. So, we will be off Friday, March 30th, Monday, April 2nd, Tuesday, April 3rd, and Wednesday, April 4th, and back at school on Thursday, April 5th. Now, we've worked very hard to help the staff that had commitments, weddings, things of that nature, to work with them and do what needs to be done, and that's going very well. So, we need to approve this tonight with these two adjustments. The next set of calendars, you'll notice in the upper right-hand corner, and this set is stapled for you, option one, option two, and option three. Now, this is for the 18-19 year. And the reason I bring this back to you, there is no real change except for the end of the school year, and in my notes, I recommended that I am thinking option one is the best way to go here, which allows us to be off Tuesday, June 4th, which is the primary day. What that would do to us is have the last day of school be on Friday, the 21st, and our commencement ceremony on Monday, the 24th. If you look at option two, we're not off on primary day, but option two builds in four snow days. Now, as we talked last couple of board meetings, all of the options, as they currently sit, only have three snow days built in, so this is a little bit of a risk, obviously, what we're dealing with this year. But prior to this, we have not had a winter like this year in four years. So, hopefully, the trend continues next year, and the years after that will be okay. And then, the difference in option three is that we would finish on the 20th, which is Thursday. This would only be three days built in. We would finish on the 20th, but because we cannot have commencement on a Friday, we would still have commencement on Monday, the 24th. The rest of the calendar has been approved, there's no change to the other portions, the other, the other months of the calendar. The only difference is that I believe we should be off primary day. And that's why I'm recommending to you that we go with option one. We close the schools on Tuesday, June 4th. It would be, everybody would be off. We would finish the school year on Friday, the 21st, and our commencement would be on the 24th. So, let me open it up to you now, as the board, for discussion.
Okay. Mr. Alpert, anything?
Just, can you just clarify for folks why graduation can't be on a Friday?
Sure. There are religious reasons that we do not conduct commencement on a Friday night.
Want to have it out there?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Mr. Schwartzman, anything?
I concur that I think we should be closed on primary day for the same reason we should be closed on election day. They're the same thing, so if we're closing for one end, the concerns, we should have similar concerns. So, I think option one is a better option.
Mr. Robertson, anything?
I think option one is the best of the three, but what concerns me are the number of snow days. You know, it's, over the past few years, we've twice experienced going over snow days, and even, and, you know, it's never convenient or desirable to have to go into the spring break period. I mean, we do what we have to do. I almost would have preferred a hybrid, in a way.
Well, let me just say that we haven't since 2014 had to deal with additional snow days. That was the last time.
Right.
So, it's been four years since we've had that issue, going on our fourth year now. So, again, we don't know what winters are going to bring. We've had, you know, a couple of winters, the last two, that have been actually very good. And last year, if you remember, we actually had a day to give back, which we did around Memorial Day. So, I think this is one of those very unique kind of winters, and hopefully, we're done with winter, but I, you know, again, we, none of us can predict what it is, but based on, hopefully, this doesn't happen again, Mr. Robertson.
Plan on it. If we did have another, next year, if we do have five or six snow days, what's your plan?
We would do it like we have always done it, and where we take away from the spring break, and we work on the back. Now, next year would be a little different. If you look at the very bottom of the calendar, right above the Board of Education meetings, you'll notice that we have April 15, 16, 17, and 18. The reason it starts at the beginning and not the end is, the end is Good Friday, which is the 19th of April. This year, we start the vacation with Good Friday, so that's why we're not beginning it this year, and why we're going from the other end this year. But if we did need to take days, we would begin with April 15th.
And we could always consider June 4th.
Yes, we could.
Correct, correct.
Absolutely, we could.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. Mr. Retschman, anything else?
No, I just wasn't sure if you had any questions, Mr. Charles.
The HIB report is coming around. The HIB report is coming around.
Yeah, I was gonna look at that, yeah. And Washington is...
Any questions from any board members?
What was going on in March 1? And March 1?
Let me ask this.
Yeah, it's like one day.
When the data shows something like that, is there, is there some targeted training, some, something that goes on in response to the, to the data, or the busy timeframe at Washington?
Well, again, you know, we need to be careful, because when you notice that they're all on that same day, which means it could have been more than one incident, or those kids all could have been part of something, that they made a mistake, that they were doing something similar. So I don't want to, you know, blanket the tension that Washington's having an issue when a few students have maybe made a mistake. But to answer your question, Mr. Charles, yes, there is, we look at this data very carefully, and we analyze this data, and then there's training that goes on, and resources, more importantly, that are put into place for the buildings that, that need it.
Okay, thanks. That's all I have. Anybody? Ken? Mr. Schwartzman? Mr. Robinson?
Nope. Okay. And then lastly, just a couple of, a couple of pieces. I, I mentioned about the two days of the makeup. I also want to welcome Tim Beaumont, our new principal at Redwood, and I want to give out a wonderful thank you to Dr. Heather Carr, who was the interim principal, and just an absolute wonderful person, did a wonderful job at Redwood. I know she'll be missed, but I know that everybody's very excited to have Mr. Beaumont come on board, and I know he's excited as well. Our spring musical in the Heights is happening April 12th through the 15th. Just want to make sure that everybody gets out to one of those evenings, and hopefully more than just one. All of our athletic programs will be beginning very soon, even this week, if weather permits. What I mean by that is snow and getting the snow out of the way so we can play on our fields and courts. We have the spring sports pep rally on April 10th at 7 o'clock at the high school, and so hopefully, we can get out to pep rally. That's a lot of fun as well. Just a couple of things. We had the Region 1 Concert Band Festival at Verona High School on, on March 21st. The concert band, under the direction of Aaron Legattic, received a rating of bronze. The 9th grade band, under the direction of Josh Zimmer, Symphonic Winds, under the direction of Eric Legattic, both received a rating of silver. The Wind Ensemble, under the direction of Lou Kelly, received a rating of gold. Now, that's significant. The Wind Ensemble received two special awards for Best Woodwind Section and Best Brass Section. Also, soon recognized individual outstanding musician, Jack Sepaulin, who is a, plays a clarinet, so some really fine performance. Now, the Wind Ensemble's been chosen again to represent Region 1, which is the North Jersey, New Jersey State Concert, Band Gala Concert. That is Sunday, April 29th, at Kane University. If you want to see some outstanding performances, that is the place to go. It is really a terrific place, so put it on your calendar. If you need information, you can go to the website, and that information will be there for you. And the other really interesting piece for the first year is the First Annual High School Health and Wellness Fair took place, and I had the pleasure of going up, and there were 23, excuse me, 24 different agencies that participated, and they set it up that the physical education health kids came down through. 700 10th to 12th graders were able to, to get through the health fair and the wellness fair that day, and it was really terrific how they had everything set up. And what was unique is the students received a scenario, and they had to work together. They had 10 minutes in each block and did different things as far as accomplishing the scenario, and then they discussed it afterwards. A lot of different individuals involved, but really, a terrific event that was put on, and just want to thank all those involved for doing it really, really fine. And also want to thank all the agencies, a lot from West Orange, but a lot from outside of West Orange, and a lot of really important pieces as far as health and wellness. So there's a lot of other things, but I don't want to steal the thunder, so I'll go ahead and leave those for the board members. That's all I have.
Before you close, Mr. Ruckus, can you talk a little bit, give us a Park update?
Sure. Park, let me just get to my notes here. I'll give you the exact dates for Park. The high school was first with April 17th. We sent the Park letters out, they were sent out today, and what's interesting is the governor and the commissioner both indicated that they believe this will be the last year for Park. We are concerned in the sense that it's not that we're not afraid to see Park go away, it's what's going to be next. And so change is hard, especially when you're talking on a, on a governmental level, like the Department of Education. So we're waiting to see what happens, but I want to make everybody really clear, this is a really important part for Park. When you don't take the test in Park, we have a, the way that the ASSA is set up is that you have to have 95% participation. As soon as you meet that 5% that don't take it, all of those other kids are considered, considered failing scores. So when you think about looking at Park scores, and you have 400 kids that either refuse or whatever they decide to do, once we surpass that 5%, it's no longer that those scores don't count, those scores are indicated as failing scores. So instead of having a much higher percentage of passing scores, it's actually the opposite, and it works against districts. And so in my letter, I really encouraged people to try to have their student, or their child, take the test, and also do the best that they can on those tests. And this year, obviously, it's becoming that it's mandated now for graduation requirement. We're not sure what that's going to look like, if the governor and the commissioner are saying it's going to go away. But the one thing that I've learned with the Department of Education is that, you know, they say something may go away, but it may not as well. And we need to be very clear that as of right now, we're just encouraging everybody to do the very best they can, because it's that misnomer out there that they don't realize that, well, if my kid doesn't take it, it's not affecting the district. It's absolutely affecting the district, it's hurting the district score, and those district scores are compared to other district scores around the state. So I please encourage everybody. I know there's issues with the test, I get it, I haven't been a fan of it myself, but the bottom line is, we have that as our state test. It's required that the state has a test, and right now, Park is that. So if we could go ahead and, and have all the students take the test, do the very best they can, I believe we're going to see how wonderful this teaching staff has been, and how, how bright our students are, and how well they do on that test.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Anybody have a follow-up?
Yeah, please. Park refusal letters. Understanding we're trying to encourage everyone to take it, what is the status of that? You said letters went out, is there a refusal form that went out with that letter?
Yeah, it hasn't changed. It's the same as last year, that they just have to write a letter to the principal, and it comes in. We have to document that the child is refusing to take the, the test. But again, what's different, last year was the first year, and obviously, this is year two now. What's different is that once you meet that 5%, now all those scores become failing scores.
Understood, understood. But that's in the, it's in the letter, just like it was last year.
Yes, it is.
And that's all they have to do procedurally.
That's correct.
Let me follow up on, on Mr. Robinson's point. So is it the, let's say 9%, so is it just the 4% above the 5, or is the whole 9 now that's, that's counted as failing?
Well, all failing scores count as a failing score.
Correct.
Right? What happens is that the way they set up in ESSA, that 95% have to participate. So once you meet that 5%, everything belong that, every, everything beyond...
Anything above, past that.
Is now a failing score.
Okay. Do you think though, or anticipate, that because Park has, there is talk, some serious talk about it being, you know, discontinued, that this year, there's going to be a larger amount of people, why bother taking it, you know, that type of?
I, I hope not. Again, simply because, at the end of the day, we're compared against districts that have a lot of kids taking it. We have brilliant kids in this, in this district, and we have great educators who are getting them prepared. If they really took it seriously, they would do very well, and the district would reflect that excellence.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on the gen, before I get into the public agenda item, comments, and questions, there were some, some of the members of the community had asked, talk, talk about the New Jersey School Board's resolution on gun control, and Mr. Alpert has done some work on that, so I want him to update the, the committee on that.
Sure, thanks. I'm the, the board liaison to the New Jersey School Board's Association, so I'd looked at that resolution that Ms. Isarlis had brought to us last meeting on gun control and mental health services. You know, we looked that over, we added our own customization to that, we sent it out to our attorney for review, and we just got that back, so I would like to make a motion to put that on the agenda for next meeting to get that approved.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your update. I'm going to make sure. Mr. Calvano, do you need to vote on that?
No, we'll just put it on.
Just put it on the agenda, yeah.
Good enough.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Alpert, for your work on that.
Sure.
Next on the agenda are questions from the public on agenda items. Just one quick note, that the difference between the preliminary agenda and the final agenda, the budget, the preliminary budget has been removed from the agenda. Hasn't been finalized yet, once it's been finalized, we will then put it back on the agenda, but it is off, off tonight's. So if anyone, anyone wants to comment about the budget, you'll have to do so at the end for, for public comment. So we will take questions from the public on agenda items, agenda items only. Please come up to the microphone. You have three minutes to speak. State your name and address for the record. Mr. Calvano will work the clock.
Robyn Isarlis, 22 Yale Terrace. That's okay. Thank you for taking that so seriously, and for doing the homework, and for putting it on the agenda. I appreciate it. And to, I wanted to thank President Charles and Vice President Robertson for coming out to our event on March 19th, on March 15th, rather. It was a great film and a great discussion, and I thank you for your, for coming out. One quick question, when will parent-teacher conferences for elementary schools be rescheduled? That's been a question we've been asked. And then I had a few questions about the Danielson evaluation. Charlotte Danielson herself wrote a piece critiquing the evaluation model in Education Week, April 18th, 2016. So some of my questions, I'm sorry, my back is to you. Okay. So in that article, and I do suggest that everyone read it, she writes, "Evaluation should be about professional learning within a culture of trust and inquiry." So my first question is, how are we ensuring that this is going to happen moving forward? Number two, she quote, she says, "Since evaluators must assign a score, teaching is distilled to numbers, ratings, and rankings, conveying a reductive nature to educators' worth and undermining their overall confidence in the system." So I get that streamlining and objective standards are important, but are there ways that the committee will include alternative measures to make this experience more meaningful so that teaching isn't further reduced to numbers and rankings? She also argued in that article that an evaluation policy needs to be differentiated by those who are new to teaching and those who are more seasoned. So will seasoned teachers be evaluated in the same way as those new in their career here in West Orange? Is there a mentoring system in place so that teachers, especially those new to their career, can have an opportunity to work with more seasoned teachers to support their professional and pedagogical development? Will those conducting the evaluation have had significant classroom experience, because that is also something that Danielson mentions in her article? And I'm curious, how many people are on the D Committee and want to thank the committee for working so hard on this? But how many are on the committee? How many teachers? How many supervisors? And how are the teacher members selected? Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Jeremiah Salinas, 7 Crystal Ave. Regarding the Danielson model observation tool that will be used starting in the fall, I believe, correct? When did the district know that you guys were going to go into the Marzano, we're going to go away from the Marzano? Did the DIAC have enough time to consider other models, like developing one in-house rather than buying one outside and maybe saving a little bit of money there? If the district decides to begin to use this model this fall, does it leave sufficient time to train the staff? But not only training the staff, also training the administrators, are they going to have professional development opportunities as well to understand how to use the observation tool properly? Because this is going to be brand-new to everyone. How much training the staff will receive besides the three scheduled training for the 50 staff members that will be part of turnkeying the information? How is the new evaluation system going to change instruction, which I think is very important? Are the parent or do the students need to be prepped for the changes that will come out of this? Will the new system be expected to result in better, worse, or essentially identical evaluation scores based on who is doing the observations? Will you go with the state mandated observations, which is too short and one long one, or are you going to go do something different, since you're going to be using a new model? And if there is a real difference, whether there's better, worst, or there isn't much of a difference in the, right, does this mean that both are fault, or are we going to go back to using something different if we feel that this doesn't work out in the next two to three years, and possibly trying to figure something in-house rather than buying something, you know, from, from an outside source?
Thank you. Next?
Mike Adam Kramer, 20 Moran Road. My question on the agenda relates to the snow day changes, and I want to know what's going to be done to make sure that student and staff attendance is optimized, that we minimize the cost of subs, and that those days are truly productive learning days.
Thank you. Next?
Good evening. My name is Amber Newsom, 18 Arvern Road. Thank you so much for putting out this teacher evaluation. Of course, my questions are always towards special needs. My question is, as far as the evaluation, especially in inclusion classrooms, how does that apply for the special needs teachers? And also a note of training. I went to a SPAN workshop in Bergen County. Certain districts require all their teachers to be special education teachers and general ed teachers, and kind of what your thought was about that? Because we do have, what, almost 1,300, 1,200 children that are serviced here, and just thinking that is a step forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You said you're looking into the accommodations for the staff that's going to be, needs to be off those two days. What are the accommodations going to be? Like, are we going to get another email? Or if we're approved or not approved?
That's it?
Yep.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone further? CNN will close that portion of the agenda. Mr. Ruckus?
I'll work backwards from Ms. White. The accommodations for the staff, I, I put in a letter out to them last week explaining that we'd be taking the, the 5th and 6th away, under, also realizing that, you know, people have some things that they were planning that are life-changing events, like weddings, surgeries, serious surgeries, things of that nature. So when I talk about accommodating the staff, I'm talking about helping them realizing that they're doing things, they were planning on doing things, knowing that if it snowed and we had to come back for makeup days, those were the first days that need to be taken care of. But also trying to help those individuals, and it's, and it's not a lot of individuals, but there's a process that they have to go through, and they have to provide the documentation indicating what they're doing, and then we're evaluating that, with the understanding that the most important thing, which Mr. Kramer said, is making sure that they're very productive days of school. And so that is the priority, making sure that plans for those subs are well, well-laid out, understandable, and that everybody else is in and doing what they normally would do. So that kind of answers both of those, those questions. So that kind of answers both of those questions. Mr. Mendez, why don't you just come up? We can talk a little bit about some of the questions. As far, Ms. Newsom, as far as districts requiring special ed and general ed, I'm aware of two in particular. One is very small, and one is more for a special population. It is, it would be a wonderful thing. Now, the state is really talking seriously, and other states are as well, about that being a requirement that before you leave college, that you not only are special ed certified, you're general ed certified. And that would be a wonderful thing because we know that there are lots of different needs in general education classes as well, and having that background and that skillset would be very, very beneficial to all schools and, most importantly, to all students. So as far as that, we would not be able to do that, being the large number of individuals we have and the small number of candidates that we get as far as certain positions. I would love to have everybody, and I will tell you, that's one of the things that I look for, and we talk about it as administrative team, that when you have somebody who's dual certified, it not only gives you flexibility, but they bring in a different skillset coming out of college or coming from another district that they'd be moving into West Orange. As far as the evaluation for special needs teachers, the Danielson model and most models are geared that it's about good teaching and learning. It's factored that students are a number-one reason for a growth model is that students are achieving at the highest level. So the model itself, and you can expand on some of these questions when I'm touching on them, but the evaluation itself helps all teachers. We just indicated it as general education or special ed. All teachers are well-prepared to help the students grow. Mr. Kramer, I think I answered your question about the, making sure that we're understanding it's a real school day and that we want excellent learning to happen. Mr. Salinas, considered in-house model? We did. We absolutely thought about an in-house model. And the thing that everybody has to realize is that, you know, there's six or seven models that are out there, and a couple of them were designed after not only New Jersey but other states said, okay, now we're going to put this, have this as a requirement, that scoring of models, et cetera. Marzano was actually one of them. And so you have to realize that building an instructional model is very, very hard. It is, it takes years to develop it, and then you have lots of pilots that go with it and lots of things to do that. We're not in the, we're in the business to make sure kids are learning at the highest level. We're not really into business to design, and if we were, we wouldn't be doing what we're doing. We'd be actually designing models to do that. But it was, it was discussed, and the DIAC, and I won't speak for Mr. Mendez, but the DIAC committee, you know, said, "This is just not something. There's enough good models out there. Just because we chose Marzano, there's other good models out there that we'd be very comfortable with." And again, we landed with Danielson, which is a fine, very fine model. There's absolutely sufficient time to train the staff and to make sure that all teachers are prepared. And I'm not sure if you came late, but Mr. Mendez did a presentation. She had the timeline. If you did, we can certainly send that to you so you can see. It's available on the website as well, that you can see the timeline, because that's one of the most important pieces, is making sure that the staff and the administrators are well-trained and that we are comfortable with the model. How does it change instruction? A model is supposed to be a growth model that helps every teacher improve, that ultimately helps every student improve their learning, and that's what Danielson does. So that's a very 30,000-feet kind of perspective, but that's really the important part of Danielson. Do parents and students need to be prepared? No, they don't. This is more about us as, as the teachers, the administrators and things, making sure that we are all on the same page. We understand what good instruction looks like and how does that benefit the students. So what happens when you have a good evaluation model that's a growth model? It benefits all students in the classroom. The state requirements would be followed the exact same way as what we've been doing now, because that's part of the law, so we have to do that. And your comment about if it doesn't work, we go back to something different, we're absolutely 100% convinced that this model is going to be very successful and it's going to help our district move forward. Let's see here. Ms. Isarlis, let me, you can talk a little bit about the DIAC and the number. I know there were 40 defendants and then some other floaters. Why don't you give the number breakdown, if you would, please?
There were 40 DIAC members. I think there were 26 teachers, an additional five non-instructional staff, and then administrators, supervisors, and directors sat on the DIAC.
Yes. As far as classroom experience with the observers, most of our administrators have been in the classroom before. Just, I don't have in front of me to say every single one, but it might be everyone. I'm not positive, but it's a very, very high percentage that our administrators were in that classroom, and they understand how hard teaching is. The mentoring system, yes. We have a mentoring system that's in place. Not only that, we have, we have a three-year plan in place to help our newest staff when they come in. That is differentiated between whether you're brand-new to teaching and whether you've been teaching somewhere else. So we want to make sure that that mentor is available. New versus seasoned, and the Danielson, the discussion you had about what Charlotte says, yes. And that's something, if you want to talk a little more to?
Sure. Yes, we're very familiar with Danielson's point of view on evaluation. When she designed the framework for teaching, it was not an evaluation model at all. It was all about teaching and learning and instruction. And when the state came out and said they wanted to use that model for evaluation, she took a very strong position on that. And then she did, in fact, allow all of the state of New York to use it, and over 65% of the state of New Jersey to use it, not including everyone else throughout the nation, with very specific fidelity to implementation criteria. So one of them is that the rubric language cannot be changed. So if we adopt the Danielson model, we are not allowed to touch the rubric language to make it more punitive, more evaluative. It has to stay about teaching and learning. Second, anyone who trains the model, turnkey, we must go through all of the training and then sign an agreement that we will implement it with fidelity and really consider that collaborative observation process, that it is about the good teaching and the learning. It is not about the gotcha, et cetera, et cetera. When it comes to the ratings, then, we can ascribe the ratings as the state does, but we must stay faithful to what the state says. We cannot go in and change the rubric language and/or increase or decrease or weight the different components differently. She's not in favor of that. In all of the training, we do have a set of videos where she's talking to the people who are observing, where she's talking through those differences and where she believes her model really needs to stay. And again, the redundancy, good teaching and learning, so it will be worked into all of the professional development. About the administrators and really making sure that those ratings stay in a, an instructional practice place. When the administrators are trained with different modules, then they will be assessed, and then we will look to find inter-rater reliability at the end of each assessment for each component. So there is an assessment for each component so that we can look to make sure that we are in alignment with the philosophy of the model.
And then just the last piece, the parent-teacher conferences. We're having a discussion this week, and we'll try to make some decisions around what the best timeframe would be. Obviously, it's not going to happen this week or the two days we're coming back, so we'll be looking at the two full weeks after we return from break and determining what days would be the best to host those parent-teacher conferences. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda, Section A Personnel. I need a motion to move the personnel items with the addendum. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
A second?
Second.
Mr. Cal, any discussion? Mr. Calvano, let's vote.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwartzbaum?
Yes, with the exception of 2B for the residency officer. I think we should hold off until we get the budget in place.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Next item, Section B, curriculum and instruction with the addendum. I need a motion to move those. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
A second.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Calvano, let's vote.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes. Section C, Finance. Need a motion to move Finance?
I'll motion.
Second.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Mr. Calvano, let's vote.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwartzbaum?
Yeah.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Section D, Reports. Need a motion to move Section D?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mr. Calvano, let's vote.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Next section under miscellaneous.
Sorry, Mr. Charles. Just clarify that number two is option one.
Correct.
Okay. Correct.
That is the calendar for 18, 19, Option One. Yep, okay. Do I have a motion to move Section E, Miscellaneous?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Calvano, let's vote.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes. Next section, report from the board members. Mr. Alper, anything?
So, what, last weekend was the St. Patrick's Day Parade. Mark and Sandy and I got to march right in front of the color guard and the band, and it was a really fantastic experience. It was my first time getting to march in the parade. It was a lot of fun. I'm glad we got to do that. And then also Tuesday, Gregory had their first-ever STEM fair, which was really exciting. Principal Mrs. Thompson and the incoming PTA president, Sky Monahan, put that together, and it was just a terrific event and going and seeing and talking to all the kids and, you know, seeing what they put together. Some really good stuff going on there. Hopefully, they'll make that a recurring thing, and this will become annual. That's all.
Okay. That's it, okay. Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Good.
Mr. Robertson?
Nothing new outside of St. Patty's. I do think, though, we should mention that, we forgot to mention that the thanks for the donations we got from Exalta for high school STEM, $2,000, and from Gary Roberts, donating the Toyota Corolla, 1993 Corolla for the Mountaineer Auto Shop.
Anything further, Ms. Robertson?
No, thank you.
Okay. I just have two items. First item is, today they released the all, the all-state, or yesterday, last night, the all-conference basketball teams for females, so congratulations to some of the lady mountaineers. And I wrote their names down, so I just want to, all-conference first team, Maya Membry, Natalie Simpson. Honorable mention was Bianca Fidi and Cassidy Farrell. The conference player of the year was our own Maya Membry. She made first team all-group four, second team all-state, and West Orange was the sectional champion for group four. So what a great year the ladies had. So congratulations to them.
Almost forgot.
Okay. The other thing, I'm going to say, the board sent out a letter to the public, and I just want to read it a little bit into the, into the official record and talk about some of the items, if we can, real quick. The letter was to the parents, the teachers, and the West Orange community, and I'm just going to read the last paragraph, basically. "To begin the process of healing and strengthening our partnership with you, we're implementing the following board initiatives in the near future. Expansion of the PR committee to become a PR committee and relations committee. Regular special service progress reports. Follow-through on previous board initiatives to ensure parent, teacher, and community input, including town hall meetings, surveys, adding a student representative to the Board of Education, and starting up new board committees, including the Safety and Security Committee, Finance Committee, and the Curriculum. I want to turn over now a few minutes to the Vice President, Mark Robinson, to talk a little bit about the PR committee and some of the work him and Mr. Alper have done with that."
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Charles. So Mr. Alper and I are chairing the PR and Community Relations Committee, and we'll be working with Ms. Cummings and as well as Mr. Bashkov, who are, you know, working on our PR stuff year-round. But really, the focus now is going to be more on bringing people into the fold, getting your input, getting your ideas, getting your involvement. So we are going to reach out to community groups. We're reaching out to West Orange Cares. We're going to reach, reach out to Essex Rising. We're going to reach out to CPAC. We want your voice. We want your participation. Our Council of PTAs, we want your voice. We want your participation. And we'll also be reaching out to a number of parents who have been very vocal in the community and have approached us saying, hey, as did, by the way, West Orange Cares and CPAC and Essex Rising, all did reach out to us and say, "We want to be part of the process of healing. How can we work together?" So we truly appreciate that. We welcome that. We're going to do that. And there are a number of parents who also reached out to us and said, hey, how can we get involved? You know, how can we move forward together? And we want to help out. So this is a great opportunity for, not only for community healing, for community unity and teamwork, and we'll be reaching out to you shortly. We're trying to figure out how to structure it and working with our, the great talent that we already have. And we'll be, but we will be listening to you and involving you in these activities. I just want to thank you for reaching out to us.
Well, we talked a little bit about timeframe, right? We talked a little bit about our most immediate, I guess, project, is the budget, right?
Is the budget.
Is the budget.
Oh, my gosh, yes.
And that's going to, you know, but also within the next, I got to say, 30 days or so, there's some of the committee stuff, the student representative stuff.
We will be reaching out. We have to coordinate and get, so we coordinate all of our schedules with the core team, and then we'll be reaching out to our, to Robyn Isarlis, who's out here, and other folks, and Mr. Salinas, and look forward to it.
Yep, okay. Anything you want to hear? Mr. Alper?
We've covered everything.
Mrs. Schwartzbaum, anything?
Good.
Okay. Next meeting for the board will be held at 6:30 PM. The public session, 8:00 PM on April 16th, right here at West Orange High School. Next on the agenda is petitions and hearings of the citizens on any topic. Please come up to the microphone. You'll have three minutes to speak. State your name and record, and address for the record. Mr. Calvano will work the clock. This could be on any item you wish to speak about.
Adam Kramer, 20 Moran Road. It's a little disconcerting that the budget was dropped at about 4:00. I had planned to come here to speak about that, and with my schedule, this may be the only time I can address the board before the budget is voted on. So I wanted to give a few thoughts on that. West Orange has a school tax levy that is higher than probably just about any jurisdiction anywhere in the state and nation. So controlling spending for our citizens has to be a priority. I love this town. I want it to be known as a good town with good schools. I don't want it to be known as a place that's just known for high taxes. Budgeting is hard. It's about being honest with people and saying you can't do everything that everybody wants. The resources just aren't there. So I look at this a little differently. Why is West Orange spending a little bit more per student and a higher tax levy than lots and lots of other districts that have a lot of other similarities across northern New Jersey? And so I've been doing a lot of research on the web, calling districts and looking at things. Here's a couple of interesting things I found. Very few suburban districts have any assistant principals in a grammar school. Very few. Maplewood in South Orange has approximately the same number of staff, approximately the same student enrollment. Their HR director has a salary that's about half. Our insurance for our Our insurance for our personnel is basically uncomparable to any other district in the state. It's better. It's a much, much more extensive plan. Many, many districts do not provide after-school busing for athletes and extracurricular to get home at night. Budgeting is about setting priorities. As a taxpayer, I want good schools. I want good test scores. I want our students to have opportunities to thrive, but we can't have everything. We need to set priorities. We need to have an honest conversation with the public about what we can afford, what is absolutely necessary, and what may have to go. And quite frankly, I respect the board members, I respect the super, I respect our business administrator, but I think you have a lot of work to do in that regard. Because of where we are.
Time's almost.
So I thank you for listening and wish you the best of luck with the budget process.
Thank you.
Hi, Cindy Maitu Brown, Twenty Four, Corwell Circle. I will echo some of the sentiments, uh, shared by Mr. Kramer, um, with the exception of the after-school busing. I think it's very necessary for students, and I know it's a large expense, but maybe we can look at other things to, uh, cut. Some students may not be able to participate in after-curricular activities, and, you know, being latchkey kids, it's very difficult. I had three in the district, and I benefited from that. So I think that we should look elsewhere, but with respect to, you know, cutting on overhead expenses and, and administration, it's a very difficult decision, I know, but it's something that we need to seriously look at. Also, I'm very excited, and, and I came to thank you again, and I've had personal conversations with some of you, but we are really, um, on behalf of myself and Essex Rising, as a steering committee member, looking forward to starting that work in healing the community and moving forward. You know, for me personally, you know, I've been up here often asking for an independent survey so that we can know in advance what our issues are, so we can fix them and not necessarily throw out the baby with the bathwater. So I am happy to see that you are making those efforts to, you know, work together as a community to make sure our schools are, are solid schools, and something that we've always been proud of. The one suggestion I'd make is that, I, I know when it comes to evaluations, teacher evaluations, admin evaluations, and even our superintendent's evaluations, sometimes they occur in silos. I think that that is not a good board policy. I would suggest and recommend, as we do in my district, that there are teacher liaisons to your board, so that you get a broad perspective of what's really happening inside each building, not just from one or two administrators that are giving you those reports. So I know I said I wasn't putting that in an email, it's been very busy, but I just wanted to share that with you. I think that, you know, having a student liaison, but also a teacher liaison, and those teachers should be, you know, picked at random by lottery. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Jeremiah Salinas, Seven Crystal Ave. At the last meeting that, uh, that we had, I asked the Board of Ed, uh, for a board, uh, the self-evaluation that was done last year. I'm still waiting on information regarding the board's self-evaluation, as it was presented by, uh, Charlene Peterson from the New Jersey School Board on October thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. There are quite a few things that she pointed out that are concerning, such as the lack of trust that the board members have of each other. So when you start talking about, you know, healing the community and, 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 uh, bringing everybody in, well, everybody has been knocking at your door, it's just that you haven't let anyone in, uh, to come in and actually partake and be, uh, you know, influencing this. So I'd like to see the report. I've seen the video, uh, but there's no minutes, there's, uh, nothing on there, and, uh, she was very stern with the things that she said, and, uh, she was very concerned as well with, uh, what she found out, uh, what was happening amongst, uh, yourselves. You guys were rating each other very highly, um, individually, but very low, uh, as a collective unit. In addition to that, one of the things that I found very interesting was that you guys said you guys had a great, um, you guys rated yourself highly because you guys had great communication with the community, um, but history says a little bit different than that. Um, in addition to that, I was also looking at the merit goal submissions for the school year of two thousand sixteen-seventeen. You didn't start the clock, sir, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Thank you, by the way.
That's right, there you go.
Good job. You, the, the description goals, like, for example, coordinate and oversee a comprehensive analysis and review of the Special Education Department by evaluating in district and out-of-district program services and staffing. Mr. Rutske, we got a merit bonus for this, but this is the job of the Special Education Department Supervisor. In addition to it being an extremely easy, um, goal to accomplish, it's just overseeing or coordinating, um, something that's probably part of what the, uh, description of the job of the superintendent is. Another one was, uh, meter exceed seventy percent of year-one goals as outlined in the student achievement goals, two, objective one of the district five-year strategic plan. Observe and coordinate, uh, the district's five-year strategic plan by implementing at least seventy percent of the year-one action plan that supports the goals and the objectives. Again, these are just part of the duties and responsibilities of the, this job description of the superintendent. This is not really a qualitative goal, as there are areas that numbers will not evaluate whether the goal was met or not, right? For example, you guys were talking about how Park is gonna go away. Well, all of this has Park written all over it. What are we gonna do when Park does go away? Some of these goals are supposed to be met by twenty-twenty-one, but we might not have Park by twenty-nineteen, so are you gonna review this whole thing again and request a refund on something that you already paid for? I know, it's kind of hard, right? So, um, another thing was, is that it says that the graduation rate is gonna increase from eighty-six percent to ninety-one percent by twenty-twenty-one, but we don't know what type of numbers we're going to have at the school based on whether we have an increase in the population in West Orange in the next five, five years. About the goals and the objectives that you guys had, um, you know, professional development ones, um, the number of students enrolled in the AP courses is gonna increase by ten percent. I don't know if that's really, uh, something that's aggressive or not. In addition to that, I don't want to run out of time here. Unfortunately, we had another incident with a bus driver, um, but that's part of one of the objectives that you have here and the goals that you said you were gonna meet by the end of this, or last year, I should say, which was to train bus drivers and monitors in the areas of student behavior and safety procedures, right? But, I don't know. I don't know if you guys actually looked at some of these things. Some of your long-term goals should be short-term goals.
Time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further?
Can I just bring these over to you? You can have a copy of them.
I'll give it to, uh, Mr. Calvano, the clerk.
Sounds great.
He'll pass it out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further? Seeing no one, close that portion of the agenda. Mr. Rutske, we'll start with you.
Sure, again, I'll work backwards. Um, as far as bus drivers, uh, obviously it's a very sad situation that took place, very scary situation took place. But I don't want to, again, do blanket detention on anybody where we say that our bus drivers are not good bus drivers, that they're not trained, et cetera. Bus drivers are trained, uh, quite often, and, um, we have some good ones. And when there are mistakes made, we address the behaviors, um, of the bus drivers, but that situation in particular was a very sad situation, was handled immediately and appropriately. Uh, Park goes away, I request refund. Understand merit goals are, uh, a yearly, they're not over a five-year. What you were reading was about the, uh, strategic plan, which is a five-year strategic plan, but the merit goal was not. So if something would change in the strategic plan, we would go back and reevaluate the strategic plan. Let's say that Park did go away, and we had something in there about Park. Obviously, whatever the ne- next state test would be, we would have to, um, look at that, that new test and determine, is that goal still something that's appropriate? A- as far as the, um, let's see here, uh, keeping after-school busing, yes. I agree that after-school busing for students is very important. You take away after-school busing, and you are limiting what kids are able to do and what kids are able to be involved in. And while, um, we understand there's a cost to that, um, having students exposed and having students to be able to participate in things are, are a very important part of learning throughout their thirteen years. So, um, I would disagree, Mr. Kramer, that, um, getting rid of after-school buses is a way, because there's so many kids that benefit, uh, from that piece. You heard Mr. Charles talk about the budget and that that's a priority right now that we're working on. So I, I don't think anybody on the board takes that job lightly. They take it very seriously, and they understand, uh, the taxes in West Orange are very high. That's something we have to do, and, and we have to evaluate the entire process.
Mr. Charles? Comments from the board, Mr. Alper?
Um, yeah, I would just echo, there's certainly a lot of places that we can and should be looking at costs. Late buses absolutely, for me, are not one of those places. It's, you know, critical that everybody be able to participate in extracurriculars. It's such an important part of why so many kids keep coming to school, the kids who aren't necessarily the academic superstars who have found a place where they can thrive. Also, just because I was at the three community meetings where, uh, two winters ago, I think, where members of the community got together and came up with what we thought the district goals should be, uh, working with Charlene from School Boards to do that, and then those goals got sent out from the community to the board, which turned them into the five-year plan that the board at the time that came out of it. So all of this, things like increasing AP, uh, the number of kids taking AP classes by ten percent by, um, whichever the year is on there, that all came out of things the community wanted to see happen. And the community said, "We want more kids taking AP classes, we want more kids doing, doing this, we want to see higher performance in general." And the board turned that into the goals, which was all then voted on and approved and put into place. So it's critical people be involved at the beginning and that people come to the community meetings. There were a lot of people at the first one, not so many at the second, and fewer at the third. It's important that people be involved and help set these goals, but this all came from the community, and what's in the five-year plan is pretty reflective, you know, of what the community came up with, uh, during those meetings.
That's it?
That's it.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
In regard to the, uh, bus driver incident, uh, it is unacceptable. The board, as well as superintendent, addressed it immediately. As anything else in life, we can only implement policies, procedures, training. It's, if we, we all strive for a hundred percent, but, uh, real world, uh, doesn't happen, but if someone has a way to achieve a hundred percent compliance, always willing to listen. As far as the budget, uh, we do take it very seriously. We need to collectively be cognizant of the fact that, um, tax increases, uh, need to be in line with what people's salaries increases are and in line with, uh, inflation. We are approaching a given, uh, exorbitant tax increases. Last year, they went up over four and a half, they went up collectively with the town and, uh, the school budget, almost seven, eight percent. And we, we need to address it. And it, these are always difficult decisions, and, uh, there's a lot of debate, and, uh, hopefully we can come to a consensus.
Anything further?
That's it.
Mr. Robertson?
Couple of things. First of all, in terms of goals, um, annually, we have district goals, uh, merit goals, board goals, uh, superintendent merit goals and board goals. For, in terms of the merit goals in the new contract, there is one quantitative merit goal. So, Mr. Salinas, you know, you're right, this is an opportunity for us to look and to make sure that it is a, a quantitative goal that can be directly influenced, led by the superintendent, understanding that to execute anything, the superintendent still has, you know, the administrators and staff, uh, having to help execute along the way. But we can set, you know, a, a reach goal, something that is substantive, and it will have to be quantitative. Uh, that's number one. Number two, um, I agree with Mr. Alper in terms of how the strategic plan was formed to an extent. At the end of the day, the board owns the responsibility of student achievement. It's actually our number-one reason for being. We did, uh, get quite a bit of feedback from the community, more than any other strategic plan ever done in this district, and we took all of that into account. But at the end of the day, we still had the job of going through line item by line item, and a lot of hard-working folks like Mrs. Dementes, and it just, and so many people who were, uh, crunching numbers and, and, and trying to fill in all the, the slots of the areas that we selected to focus on strategically. But at the end of the day, we, we are supposed to review, uh, when we get our strategic plan progress reports, that's our opportunity to say, "Wait a minute, we need to reevaluate this," whether it's the SAT goals or PSAT goals. This is our opportunity to say, "Stop, we need to look at this again, we need to reset the bar or reevaluate the priorities." Um, and we cannot defer that to anyone else. Additionally, when it comes to district goals and board goals, district goals are led by the superintendent, but the board still, at the end of the day, has the responsibility of, uh, making recommendations, and we still have to approve it. So we own the responsibility. And then board goals, you, you hear some of them actually in formulation in terms of the initiatives we're doing, but these are things, and we do appreciate your critical feedback on that. In terms of the budget, um, Mr. Kramer, every year I appreciate your feedback. You're one of the most critical thinkers, I think, who comes to the mic, uh, and, and you do deep-dive analysis. We take it very seriously, and we do have to think about the priorities and what we need to cut. You know, the after-school, uh, the, 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 the late busing would never cut for safety, first of all. Um, you know, kids are often going home at night, um, and not all the adults, not all the parents will have the ability to pick them up. Some of the parents are working nights. So we want kids, as, when we look at student achievement, we want our, our children to be able to do the after-school activities and the athletics, because there's actually data that indicates that, uh, that, that can help them to achieve more also academically. Producing that well-rounded achiever is, is part of what we do. So definitely wouldn't want to cut that, but you are absolutely right. We need to make some hard choices. Now, I'll also challenge you in another area that you've brought to my attention before. West Orange is one of the lowest ranking in the state of New Jersey in terms of business contribution to the tax base. So the only thing factoring into the taxes, while we are the biggest chunk percentage-wise, uh, are, are the schools, at the same time, we need to look seriously at how, uh, at, at business development in West Orange and how that impacts our tax base and how that helps to pay for the schools as well. In, um, uh, what's the county in, in Maryland? Oh, goodness. Uh, there's a county in Maryland right now where they actually credit the schools with helping to spark economic development, but that economic development was followed not by tremendous residential development, it was followed more by business development. And that business development helped to underwrite the schools. And certainly, you know, uh, I mean, I don't have to beat this to death, because you know the, you know the data better than I do. And last, uh, healthcare, we are, you know, that's certainly a, a major impact, and unfortunately, we, we certainly can look at how to, uh, through our brokers to negotiate, uh, better rates, to look at other providers, but we are locked into the overall plan for the next five years, and we wanted to take a very hard look at it, uh, the next, the next time things come around to make sure that, uh, we're achieving, uh, the economies of scale that would deliver in quality healthcare, but not in a way that really, uh, you know, puts a heavy impact, uh, in terms of, uh, tax increases. Talked about Park, merit goal, strat plan. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Just real quick, my, my thoughts on the, on the budget. We are basically still in the early part of the process, and, uh, we, we're gonna have to have some hard conversations on what we can and what we cannot afford. That's just simply, uh, our reality, what, what has to happen. But we are in the beginning part of, of, of the process. There's There's a budget work sessions that has to happen, and we have to come up with, uh, the administration has to come up with the preliminary, and there's other work sessions after that before we get to the final budget. So, um, you know, we're gonna have to have those conversations, those hard conversations, which, you know, I think that, you know, as a board, as a community, we have to have. What, what can we afford, what, what can we not? And so, there may be some things that, that, that have to, have to be cut to make it, make it affordable. Simple as that? Okay, I need a motion, uh, to move it to executive session. I'm gonna, no action, will we take it?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.